...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty being held as eternal.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the west wall of the meeting room and is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, Approve Agenda As Submitted. Item B, Receive and Place On File Lotises Pertaining To This Meeting. Item C, Receive and Place On File All Materials Having Any Bearing On This Meeting. Item D, Approval Of Minutes Of Regular Meeting On September 5th, 2017, As On File In The City Clerk's Office. Item E, Approval Of Treasurers' Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $737,857.61. Item F, Approval Of Boswell Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $62,276.72. Item G, Approval Of Write-Off Of Ambulance Bad Debts. Item H, Approval Of Special Designated License For St. Joseph's Catholic Church For A Special Event On October 29th, 2017, From 4:00 p.m. Until 7:00 p.m. At 612 High Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item I, Approval Of Special Designated License For Main Street Beatrice For A Special Event On October 10th, 2017, From 4:30 p.m. Until 8:00 p.m. At Lammell Plumbing, 200 North 7th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item J, Resolution Number 6105, Granting Permission To Julie Fisher Doing Business As Julie's Hot Dogs To Sell Goods Upon City Property. And Item K, Resolution Number 6106, Approving A Request From The Beatrice Ariga Chamber Of Commerce And Gage County Tourism To Close Highway 136, Which Is Also Known As Court Street, From 4th Street To 6th Street And 5th Street From Perkins Street To High Street On December 3rd, 2016, Between 6:00 p.m. And 7:00 p.m. For The Holiday Lighted Parade And Permission To Use Charles Park For Staging Of Pictures With Santa. Anyone From The Council Want An Item Removed? Phil?
I need to abstain on H. Susan's Chairman Of The St. Joseph Council.
Okay. Julie noted. Anyone Else From The Council Want An Item Removed? Anyone From The Public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move That All The Items Listed Under The Consent Agenda Be Approved, Accepted, And Eradified As Presented.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Kerr, That The Items Listed Under The Consent Agenda Be Approved. Your Vote Please. That Is Approved, 8-0. Next Item On The Agenda Is A Public Hearing. Public Hearing On The Acquisition Of Real Property From Beatrice Scrap Processing Described As Follows. The Unplated Parcel On The Northwest Corner Of 4th And Ames Street, City Of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, Partial ID Number 1013454000. That Public Hearing Is In Session Right Now? Mr. Templemeier?
If You Turn To Page 38 Of Your Packet, It's Probably The Best Way To Describe This. It's 4th And Ames. It's On The Northwest Corner Of 4th And Ames. This Will Be The Where The Trail Extension Goes Through That Connects Trailhead Park To The Trailhead That's Down At Dempsters. That Extension Will Come Through Next Year. This Parcel Property Is Adjacent To That Trail. As We Were Going Through And Doing A Bunch Of Surveying Work In That Area, The Owners Of That Property, Beatrice Scrap Processing, Came To Us, The City, And Asked We'd Be Interested In This Piece Of Property. We've Agreed To A Price Of $3,000. Our Idea Or Plan With This Project Moving Forward Is To Remove The Two Containers That Are There And Turn The Area Into Greenspace To Go Along With The Trail That's In That Area.
Anyone From The Council? Rich?
Don't They Take Those Big Steel Containers?
They Might Very Well Go Back To The Scrap, Yes.
Anyone From The Public?
They Must Pay For The Property.
Catlin, Move That Public Hearing Be Closed?
Mayor, I move That The Public Hearing Be Closed At 7:04 p.m.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Bilzbuck, That The Public Hearing Be Closed At 7:04 p.m. Your Vote Please. That Is Approved, 8-0. Next Item Is Resolution Number 6107, Executing All Necessary Documents To Acquire Real Estate From Beatrice Scrap Processing, Inc.
Mayor, I move That Resolution Number 6107 Be Passed And Adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Kerr, That Resolution Number 6107 Be Passed And Adopted. Any Further Discussion? From The Council Or From The Public? And Your Vote Please. And That Is Approved, 7 In Favor And One Abstention. And That's Mr. Catlin. Next Item On The Agenda, I'll Introduce Resolution Number 6108, Entering Into A Letter Of Agreement Amendment Number One With Olson And Associates, Inc., To Provide Construction Observation Services For The Installation Of A Bar Screen At The Wastewater Treatment Facility As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works.
Mayor, I move That Resolution Number 6108 Be Passed And Adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Cook, That Resolution Number 6108 Be Passed And Adopted. Discussion?
As You Guys Know, We Have A Bar Screen Being Installed Down At The Wastewater Treatment Facility. We Have It Ordered. It's Purchased. It's Being Built Right Now. We're Going Through The Bid Process To Get A Contractor To Install It. Those Bids, I Believe, Open Wednesday Of This Week. This Is A Contract To Have Olsons Come Down And Help Inspect The Construction And Installation Of The Bar Screen. You'll Notice It's Time Material, So Whatever Time They've Got Into It, Not To See $26,000. Some Of This Work Can Be Done By James And By Dean Kelch. Some Of It Will Need Olsons And Some Of Their Experts To Come Down And Take A Look At It, Most Nodily The Electronic Components Of The Installation Of The Bar Screen.
So This Company We're Contracting With, They're Putting It In But They Can't Say They Put It In Right?
Well, I Mean, You're Going To Contact Somebody, But You Always Want Somebody Else To Go And Check Their Work, Make Sure They Actually Did It According To Code And Corrections And Do Everything The Way They're Supposed To. Olsons Is The One That Have The Expertise To Be Able To Do That. Again, James Burrows Can Do Some Of That, But There's Some Of Those That He's Either Busy With Other Projects Or Not Quite In His Wheelhouse He Feels 100% Comfortable Checking All Those Things.
Is This The One Where Part Of The Roof Has To Be Removed From The Facility?
Correct.
To Install This?
So Yes, You're Going To Want The Structural Engineer To Check To Make Sure That The Roof Is Taken Off Correctly And Re-installed Correctly. The Electrical Engineer To Make Sure It's Hooked Up Correctly. The Actual Bar Screen Itself, James Is Very Comfortable With And Making Sure That's Installed Correctly.
Questions?
Big Piece Of Equipment.
What's That?
Big Piece Of Equipment.
Yep.
How Long Have We Been Without The Bar Screen?
The Plant Where It Was Originally Built Had A Bar Screen In It. It Rusted Out Over A Number Of Years And It Was Removed. I Can't Tell You That Was Sometime In The 90s, So You Been Without One For 20 Years. We Use A Channel Monster Now Is What We Use. It's Not As Efficient. The Idea Is To Have Take That Out And Put Back In A Bar Screen.
And The Thing That We're Using, From What I Understand, The Thing They're Using Now Is More Manual. It Has To Be Manipulated More. There's More Breaks More. It's A Manpower Issue. And It's Dangerous.
Rich?
Usually How Long Do Those Bar Screens Last?
This Bar Screen Should Last, I Would Say, Probably 20 Years Is My Estimate.
When They Put The Roof Back On, Are They Going To Structure The Thing To Where If 20 Years From Now We Have To Remove It Again? It'll Be A Lot Easier To Remove Instead Of Taking The Whole Thing Down?
Just A Slab. It's Just A Slab Of Concrete, Isn't It?
Yes. So Yeah, They Have To Cut It In A Certain Way, But Yes, They're Going To Have Some Access Points That They Need To Get Back Into It. You Have To Remember The Bar Screen Comes In One Piece?
Yes.
And So You Have To Have A Crane That Lifts It Straight In And Straight Out.
Other Questions? From The Council? From The Public? All Right, Your Vote Please. That Is Approved, 8-0. Resolution Number 6108 Has Been Passed And Approved. Next Item Is Resolution Number 6109, Entering Into A Demolition Agreement With Lotman Excavating LLC For The Demolition Of The Grain Elevator And Brick Building Located At 716 South 6th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move That Resolution Number 6109 Be Passed And Adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Bilzbuck, That Resolution Number 6109 Has Been Passed And Adopted. Discussion?
As Your Packet Notes, We Went Out For Bids, I Think Back In May Of This Year And Got Bids Back On The Demolition Of The Elevator. Lotman Excavating Was The Low Bid At $163,450. That Is Not Include Landfill Fees Or Asbestos. So Those Two Prices Are Additional To This Amount. We Initially Said When We Put Out For Bids That The Contract Was Supposed To Start October 15th Is What We Were Looking For. Lotman's Got Ahold Of Us He'd Like To Start October 1st. We're Comfortable With That Since It Gets Over To The New Fiscal Year. And So You'll See In The Contract Before You Tonight That His Work Would Begin October 1st, 2017.
Bob?
Well, This One Kind Of Gives Me A Little Bit Of Heartburn. I Don't See Any Problem With Lotman's. I Don't See Any Problem With The Actual Bid And Understand Wanting To Tear Down The Elevator. The Challenge That I Have Is I Don't Know If We've Worked With The Businesses Around There, Because Quite Honestly, Tearing Down The Elevator's Not Going To Do A Lot From An Aesthetic Standpoint When You Look At Some Of The Things That Need To Be Cleaned Up From Other Business Owners Right There Next Door. And So For Me, I Would Hope That Maybe We Would've At Least Reached Out To Them And Talk To Them About How We Can Make This Into One Nice Appearance Across From About Caldwell To Ames. There's A Lot Of Things Could Just Be Picked Up And Cleaned Up. And By Removing The Elevator, If It's From Aesthetics, It's Not Going To Reach The Goal That You're Hoping For.
Rich?
Well, I've Been Against This Project From The Day One. I Think It's A Waste Of Money Right Now. We Should've Left It With The Guy Who Owned It To Take Care Of The Thing And Forced Him To Take Care Of It. Now We're Spending Another $163,000 To Tear It Down Just Because Somebody Thinks It's A Nice Work. And I Think We Could've Used That $163,000 Elsewhere. And I Agree With Bob. There's A Lot Of Properties Around There That Needs Cleaned Up And We Been Saying That For Five, 10 Years And They Still Haven't Been Cleaned Up.
Do You Think This Might Be A Start?
No. No, I Really Don't. That Property To The South Has Ignored Us And Done Their Thumb At Us For Over 10 Years. We've Been Trying To Get Them To Get That Property Cleaned Up And We Don't Push That. We Just Don't Push It.
One Thing You Have To Remember On The Property To The South That I Believe You're Referencing, Those Are Commercial Zone Properties. There's Only So Much Your Current Ordinances Allow You To Do For Commercial Zone Properties. You Know, If It's Something That You Believe Needs To Be Addressed, One Thing We Can Either Do Is Look To Amend Your Current Zoning Ordinances Or Nuance Codes That You Have On The Books To Address Those Commercial Zone Or Industrial Zone Properties More So Than We Do Today.
And I Think We Need To Be Doing That. I Think A Lot Of Our Ordinances And Stuff Should Be Looked At Now That We've Got The Budget Done.
You Know The Comments? From Anyone? From The Public? Gentlemen, Your Vote Please. And That Is Approved, 5-2-3, With Morgan, Kerr, And Party Voting Against. Resolution Number 6109 Has Been Passed And Approved. Next Item Is Resolution Number 6110, Establishing Various Fees.
Mayor, I move That Resolution Number 6110 Be Passed And Adopted.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Bilzbuck, That Resolution Number 6110 Be Passed And Adopted. Tobias?
A Couple Of Years Ago, We Worked To Have A Fee Resolution So All Of Our Fees Show Up In One Place. Makes It Easier For Us To Find, Makes Easier For The Public To Find. After We Passed The Budget, We Come Back To You With The Fee Resolution Looking To Update Any Fees That Needed To Be Updated Result Of The Current Budget That Was Passed. This Year, We Have A Couple Of In There That We're Looking To Update. First One Is In The Building Inspection Department. We're Simply Adding That Any Cost That The City Incurs For Filing Fees With The Registered Deeds Office Are Then Passed On To The Applicant. The Way It Works Today, You May Come In And Get A $25 Permit. We Didn't Spend $10 To $15 Filing Documents With Registered Deeds Office, Which Leaves Us With Very Little Money Left To Cover Our Administrative Costs. And So We're Looking To Simply Pass Those Costs That We Incur On To Applicants. Next One You See In There's Dog And Cat Licenses. The State Imposes A Licensing Fee As Well Of A Dollar And A Quarter. Again, We're Just Looking To Make Sure We Pass That On To The End Consumer. And Then Finally Is The Camping Rate, A Monthly Camping Rate. We're Increasing It From $400 To $450. Again, Just For Monthly Campers.
Questions?
How Much Increase In Dollars Will This Do For Next Year? Any Idea?
I Don't Know Off Top My Head. It Won't Be A Lot. I Mean, In The Grand Scheme Of Our Budget, It's Not Significant.
Probably Depends On The Usage Of The Services And The Facilities.
Compared To Lester, Yeah.
Sure.
Do We Have A Lot Of Monthly Campers?
We Do Have A Lot More Monthly Campers Than You Would Think.
Any Other Questions? Anyone From The Public?
We're Leaving The Swimming Pool Rates Alone For This Year.
Swimming Pool Rates Remain Unchanged, So.
Any Further Discussion? Your Vote Please. That Passes 8-0. Resolution Number 6110 Has Been Approved. Next Item Is Item E, Resolution Number 6111, Entering Into An Agreement To Loan $81,000 To Hido Properties LLC As Part Of The Downtown Facade Improvement Program And CDPG Grant
Mayor, I move That Resolution Number 6111 Be Passed And Adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, Seconded By Cook, That Resolution Number 6111 Be Passed And Adopted. Tobias?
So This Is Part Of Your Downtown Revitalization Grant That We've Been Working On. This Is The Phase Two Grant Application. So We Initially Did The Phase One Environmental Review. We Had Certain Applicants That We Moved Forward, Did The Phase Two Environmental Review. Those Have Now Come Back. And These Properties Have Completed That Environmental Review And They've Signed The Loan Documents That Are Out There. You May Ask Why Is That Loan Document When It's A Grant? Remember, We Are Getting A Grant From The State Of Nebraska. If The City Some Reason Has To Pay That Money Back, We Need A Way To Get That Money Back From The Ultimate End User. In This Case, This First One Is Hido Properties LLC. The Loan Agreement Is Written Such A Way That As Long As They Meet All The Terms Of The Grant And Keep The Improvements In Place For Five Years, The Entire Amount Of The Loan Is Forgiven. There Are No Payments Due Until That Fifth Year. So As Long As They Do What They Say They're Going To Do Throughout The Application And The Grant Process, They Will Make No Payments To Repay This Money. Yet For Some Reason Though, They Do Something That Requires Them To Pay The Money Back, We Have An Avenue To Go Back And Reclaim That Money Back From The End Applicant In This Case.
Joe?
Are These The Only Ones That Have Made It Through? Or Are There Others That Are Still Coming Up?
I Believe I Have Gotten Environmental Reviews Done On All But Two Properties. One, I Got The Letter Back From State Historical Preservation Office Today. And So Quite Frankly, I Just Got To Finish The Last Piece Of Paperwork And Have The Mayor And I Sign It. The Other One, We're Still Waiting To Hear Back From State Historical Preservation Office. All The Other Properties Have Made It Through The Tier Two Environmental Review And Have Come Out Fairly Clean. No Big Issues There. They All Have Loan Documents In Their Hands. They're All In The Process Of Reviewing Them And Getting Back To Us. So These Are The Ones That Have Been Signed And Gotten Back To Us.
To Answer Your Questions, Yes, There's More forthcoming If All The Documents Are Signed. Dwight?
Unless You Guys Have More Information, This Is Just An Empty Building. It's Not In Great Shape At All. I'm Not Sure Why We're Going To Give This Money To A Business That Doesn't Exist Yet. Is There A Plan For Sure That's Set In Place That's Going To Open On A Certain Date? I Would Hate To See Us Giving Money To A Building That Doesn't Exist As A Business Anymore And We Have Several Of Them Downtown To Spend Money On.
It Was An Application That Was Submitted.
I Understand That. But If It's Not A Business, I'm Not Sure Why We Want To Give Money To Them. It's Just A Person With The Plan And The Plan May Or May Not Come Into fruition.
That's Why Signing The Loan Documents.
Yes, There Are Things In Place That'll Put A Viable Business Into That Facility Once It Is Up And Operational And Can Be Occupied.
That Don't Matter On That Part. I'm Worried About The Business Being In There And Another Empty Building Right Now That's Got It Out.
They're Going To Do A Complete Interior.
You Have To Come Up And Talk Then If You Want To Talk.
Any Other Comments? Questions? All Right, Gentlemen, Your Vote Please. That Is Approved, 7-1, With Dwight, Party Voting No. Resolution Number 6111 Has Been Passed And Adopted. Settle Down Guys. Next Item Is Resolution Number 6112, Entering Into An Agreement To Loan $34,000 To John And Rita Hido As Part Of The Downtown Facade Improvement Program And CDPG Grant 15-DTR-109.
Mayor, I move That Resolution Number 6112 Be Passed And Adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, Seconded By Bilzbuck, That Resolution Number 6112 Be Passed And Adopted. More Of The Same?
Same Thing, Same Documents. This Is Just For John And Rita Hido Themselves At 319 Court Street. Again, Their Application Calls For Them To Make Some Improvements On The Ex-Tier Of Their Building And Improve The Facade Of It, So.
Questions?
Which Building Was This?
319.
Which Building Is That? Is That Their Old Building? That They Had Their Plumbing Job?
I Would Defer To Michael To Know For Sure, But I.
Come On Up, Michael. Why Don't You Just Stay Here And Answer Any Questions That We Might Have?
I Just Can't Get Where The Buildings Are.
Court Street Between 3rd And 4th.
Michael, So Then Main Street, Beatrice.
Pretty Quick.
Yeah, As Far As Which Building? This Is, They Had Three Buildings They Were Using For Lammell's Plumbing. This Right Here, The Formal Lammell's Plumbing Location, This Is The Building That's Right In The Center. This Is The One That Still Has A Lot More Decorative Architectural Features, If That Helps. It Says AJ Hale On The Top.
Yeah, I Know The Building Now.
And They're Planning On Doing A Significant Work To The Opening Up The Upstairs So That Where There's Potential For Development Upstairs And Also Fixing Up A Few Things To Make The Lower Level A Little More Aesthetic And More Attractive.
I'm Sorry, I Just Couldn't Place The Building.
Any Other Questions Or Comments? From The Public? And Your Vote Please. That Is Approved, 8-0. Resolution 6112 Has Been Passed And Adopted. Next Is Item G, Resolution Number 6113, Entering Into An Agreement To Loan $5,000 To Knolls Piano And Organ Company, Inc., As Part Of The Downtown Facade Improvement Program And CDPG Grant 15-DTR-109.
Mayor, I move That Resolution Number 6113 Be Passed And Adopted.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Claybaugh, That Resolution Number 6113 Be Passed And Adopted.
This Would Be Phil Knolls' Apartment Buildings At 4th, The Intersection Of 4th And Court Street. His Application Is To Redo The Sidewalk There Along His Property.
Dwight?
Can We Have Any Sidewalk Room For That?
We Have A Sidewalk Improvement Program, Yes. He Opted To Apply Through The Grant Application Which Was A, When We Wrote The Grant Application And We Wrote The Program Guidelines, Sidewalks Were Allowed Are An Eligible Activity Under Those Guidelines.
Anybody Else? Any Other Questions? Ted?
I Know, I Guess I've Kind Of Asked This Indirectly Before, But We've Had Other Improvement Funds Available Before. Why Do You Think This Was? Why Do You Think They Took, Everybody Took These Before? Because We've Had Them Gone, We've Had Them Go Unused In The Past.
USDA Dollars Through Main Street?
Well, Not Even That. I Think Years Ago, There Was A City Facade Fund, Right?
We've Done Both Of Those. And We Had Zero Applications For Both Of Those Programs. And This One, Everyone.
When You Say Zero Applications From Which Program?
For Both Of The.
The Main Street One Is Primarily Being Used For Small Business Development. So Actually, Most Of That Money Is Loaned Out Right Now, About All $80,000. But Not For Facade. It's Been Used For Small Business Generation. But You're Right, It Looked Like Years Past, Maybe The Facade Grant That They Had.
Zero.
What, Late 90s, Around 2000?
Yeah, We've Run This Twice And Didn't Have Any Takers Before. And This One, I Think These Are Good Programs. And Dwight Makes A Good Point With One And With The Sidewalk Thing Too. There's Money Available Other Places, But You Know, This Is A Good Deal On Our End Too. So I Was Just Curious Why You Thought That This One Was A Taker And The Other Ones Weren't.
Higher Match.
Higher Match, Rick?
I Think Part Of It Is Higher Match. And Also, There Was, There's A Lot More Talk About Wanting To Do Projects Besides This $340,000 In Total Grant Pool. I Mean, Between All The Different Things Going On, I Mean, There's Going To Be Probably At Least $2 Million, Maybe Upwards Of $3 Million Worth Of Downtown Building Improvements, Which Tells Me That There's Also A Lot Of Other Activity. And This Is Just A Way To Help Kickstart That, That People Are Going, Okay, Well If I Can Get A Little Bit Of This, Now It Makes Sense To Spend More Money. And It Just, Right Place At The Right Time.
I Was Just Looking For Something To Build Off Of. I Mean, If This Was Workable, Then You Know, What Else Is Workable? Because You Keep The Ball Rolling.
Rich?
I Think Too, With All The Controversy We've Had In The Last Year And Stuff Downtown, These Guys Actually Took A Look At Their Fronts And Weren't So Complacent And Got Thinking, Yeah, We Need To Clean This Up And This Come Along. And I Think That Maybe We're Seeing A New Pride In The Downtown Area.
And In Some Of These, You've Got A Couple Newer Property Owners That Are Doing Some Major Projects Like The One There At 3rd And Court That Are, You Know, They're Trying To Take An Under-Utilized Building And Put Big Dollars Into It.
I Think Also, Michael Should Be Congratulated That He Actually Contacted Individual Property Owners And Visited With Them About The Possibility Of Doing Something To Their Buildings Too, Where A Lot Of Them Have Been In The Media Now For Months And Months, Still Hadn't Heard Of Anything. And So Michael Did Reach Out To Them.
It Was Kind Of What Greg And Myself Were Able To Walk Around And Sit Down And People That Wanted That Time To Understand It, They Got A Chance To Understand That, Hey, This Wasn't A Way To Secretly Try To Figure Out What They Were Doing. It Was A Way To Hopefully Get Them Moved Off Of Dead Center And Invest Into A Property That Needed Investment.
Any Other Questions From The Council? Anybody From The Public? All Right, Your Vote Please. That Passes 8-0. Resolution Number 6113 Has Been Passed And Adopted. Next Item Is Item H, Resolution Number 6114, Entering Into An Agreement To Loan $60,000 To John And Colleen Shonowise As Part Of The Downtown Facade Improvement Program And CDPG Grant 15-DTR-109.
Mayor, I would Know That Resolution Number 6114 Be Passed And Adopted.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Bilzbuck, That Resolution Number 6114 Be Passed And Adopted.
This Is The Old Radio Shack Building At What, 7th And Court Street On The Northwest Corner. It Is Currently Empty. However, There Are Plans To Move Her Catering Business Into There And Have A Reception Hall Type Of Facility At That Location. And So You'll See $60,000. All The Other Terms Are Essentially The Same As All The Other Agreements That Have Been Brought To You So Far.
Questions? Anyone? Public? Your Vote Please. That Is Approved, 8-0. Resolution Number 6114 Has Been Passed And Approved. Next Item Is Item I, Resolution Number 6115, Entering Into An Agreement To Loan $9,000 To Mike Weirs As Part Of The Downtown Facade Improvement Program And CDPG Grant 15-DTR-109.
Mayor, I move That Resolution Number 6115 Be Passed And Adopted.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Cook, That Resolution Number 6115 Be Passed And Adopted. Discussion?
This Is 623 And 625 Court Street. Again, Just Making Some Different Improvements To The Side Of This Facility Here. There Are Two Businesses In Both Of Those Buildings There. About $9,000.
Questions? Anyone? From The Public? And Your Vote Please. That Is Approved, 8-0. Resolution Number 6115 Has Been Passed And Adopted. Next Item Is Ordnance Number 17-026, To Convey The West Nine Inches Of Lot 4 And The East Lot A Half Of Lot 5, Block 64, Original Town, Now City Of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, Commonly Referred To As 407 Court Street, Owned By The City Of Beatrice, Nebraska, To Raymond A. Arter And Mary Kathleen Ratigan.
Mayor, I move That The Rules Be Suspended. An Ordnance Number 17-026 Be Read By Number Only Two Times Tonight.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Cook, That The Rules Be Suspended And The Ordnance 17-026 Be Read By Number Only Two Times Tonight. A Motion To Suspend The Rules Is Not Debatable. Your Vote Please. That Is Approved, 8-0. Ordnance Number 17-026 By Number Only The First Time, Or I Beg Your Pardon, The Second Time. And Ordnance Number 17-026 By Number The Third And Final Time.
Mayor, I move That Ordnance Number 17-026 Be Passed And Approved.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Cook, That Ordnance Number 17-026 Be Passed And Approved. Any Further Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?[1780.83]
I talked to Toby on this, and she doesn't, or they don't start their payments until, was it July?
June 1st, 2018.
June 1st, so September, October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May, June. That's 10 months.
We won't close until November, just keep that in mind.
I thought that we expressed, expressly said that it was going to be 18 months. Now, she's got 18 months, but you put another 10 on it, or 9, you're talking 28 months. That's not what the council expressed that they wanted. And if this passes tonight, she can start improvements and start using it tomorrow, correct?
No. She has to go through remontrance period, which is 30 days, and we have to go through closing, so I believe closing now is on or about, and we just changed it here, so I got to look, November... We changed closing to November 1st of 2017. After that date, she could then start making improvements.
And I believe that the discussion was that, and the agreement was that she was not to improve or use the property until it was paid for. Now, if that's the case, on 10 months and 28 months, we will be messing with this lot until January of 2020. We've given this everything in the world and been over backwards. This was what we had said and agreed on, 18 months. She didn't fix it, she didn't use it until it was paid for, and the negotiations were, it, it, nothing that we said mattered. It, it went her way.
That's incorrect.
No, it's not.
Yeah, yes, it is.
How is it incorrect?
Incorrect in that we said that she puts $2,000 down, and that $2,000 has been put down, and that she, no different than any other property owner, if they purchase that property and have a loan for that property, they can go ahead, and that loan is accruing interest during this period of time, that she can do whatever she wants to do with that property, no different than you can do with your house.
But this is not what we agreed on, Stan. This is not what we agreed on. We agreed on 18 months, she's getting 28 months. She wanted 36 months in the beginning, and we said absolutely not. If she didn't agree to the 18 months, we wouldn't sell it. That's what we agreed on that night when we talked, and this is not what this contract says. And this whole project, from start to beginning, or from start to end, has not been done the way that we said it was supposed to be done. We've been over, we've, we've made concessions, and we're making another concession, and I will not support it. I have supported this project from the very beginning, and I will not support it now.
Okay. Made your point. Anyone else?
Councilman, you're sending your power out. Just think about that when you vote.
Any other comments from anyone? And your vote please. That is approved 7-1, with Councilman Kerr voting no. Ordnance Number 17-026 has been approved.
Might as well just land on the council there.
Then, then we're going to go to a resolution, Resolution Number 6104, executing the contract for sale of real estate to Raymond A. Arter and Mary Kathleen Arter.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6104 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 6104 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion?
Just as we explained, if the city is selling property, it takes an ordinance and a resolution. You passed the ordinance earlier, the resolution authorizes the mayor and all of the necessary priorities to sign all necessary documents.
Any further questions from the public? Your vote please. That is approved 7-1, with Councilman Kerr voting against. Next item is Ordnance, Ordnance Establishing Various Salaries for City Employees and the Mayor, I mean, just city employees.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given number 17-028, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Ordnance Number 17-028 be read by, title only three times tonight. A motion to, or the motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. And that is approved 7-1, with Councilman Kerr voting no. Ordnance Number 17-028 by number the first time, Ordnance Number 17-028 by number the second time, and Ordnance Number 17-028 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that Ordnance Number 17-028 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billzbach, that Ordnance Number 17-028 be passed and approved. Discussion?
This is the third and final year of the current union contracts that we have. Per the union contracts, they call for 2.5% raise for city employees, and so the salary ordinance that you see before you represents that which is in the union contract. We'll have the opportunity to renegotiate those this next summer, so please start to prepare to volunteer yourself for union negotiations next summer.
All the help would be appreciated.
Oh, I want a police officer. Except not all of these are under the union contract, correct?
Not all of those are under the union contract, that's correct, but what we, like we have done in the past, we have done the same for those who are not in the union as those who are in the union. We've applied the same percentage.
Questions? Comments from the public? Your vote please. That is approved 8-0. Ordnance Number 17-028 has been passed and approved. Next item is the public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Any council member have anything for the public forum? Anyone from the public? All right, we'll move on then to city administrators' report.
A couple of highlights just to touch for you. Excel development, as you guys know, we passed all the appropriate rezoning and plats and all those good things. The sewer line has been designed, I think it's about 95% designed, that we need to install for that development. The water main has already been installed. They're working on making all the other necessary final touches on that, but it's been installed. I believe that Excel is working with the demolition contractors to finalize that portion of it, so hopefully you'll see work begin on that project pretty shortly. Public Properties, if you read in there, they're planting 115 trees between Scott Street, Ballfields, and Riverside Park in the couple of months, so any of you those who'd like to work a shovel a little bit and want to come help Mother Nature, let us know, and we'll put you to work planting a few trees.
Put a photo up, I just lean on one.
Do you have shovels?
What now?
Do you have shovels?
We can get shovels for you if you need them. They're better pictures.
I've got a spare spade.
Mill overlay project has started back up. You might have seen pavers around, back in town, working on curb ramps. They do that project ahead of time. You'll see the actual asphalt crew roll in, I believe, either late this week or next week, and you'll see them start doing that project and get it finished up before October 1st. And then Missling's Concrete is scheduled to begin. Mr. Teeman just left, although we'd ask him for sure, but they've been out saw cutting on Dorsey Street. You'll see that, Dorsey Street between 9th and 11th, I believe, is where we're talking, is scheduled to be shut down for probably about a month's worth of time. Should start, again, next week is when I believe the shutdown will occur and be going on then for about a month. They said they've been in for a while, did some saw cutting, left and came, and came back and working on projects here and there, depending on how other projects were going, so you'll see Dorsey Street closed down for a little while. Is 2nd Street open yet? I believe that it did not get open today because the last thing they did was crack seal. The rain, I think, pushed off the gentleman who was supposed to come in and do that project, and so I don't think it got done today. I might be incorrect, it might be open, people might be driving on it, but the last time I heard it, it was getting pushed off because of the rain to get the guy into crack seal.
Rich?
I was just going to say, what does it all go?
But it should be this week.
It should be this week, that's the last thing we're waiting on.
Trail looks good down there. They put an extra sidewalk. Looks good.
Anything else? Any questions of Tobias? All right, if none, our next regular scheduled meeting is going to be on October 3rd, right here in these chambers, and we'll have a work session then next Monday night, September 25th. Mr. Catlin, motion to adjourn, please.
Mayor, I would move that the meeting be adjourned at 7:38 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billzbach, that the meeting be adjourned at 7:38 PM. Vote please. That is approved 8-0. Thank you, everyone.